Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special call meeting of City Council on this Monday, January the 30th, 2023 at approximately 5:05 PM. Ms. Derry, would you call Row, please?
Yes. Icy Brown.
Here.
Ralph Nicker.
Here.
Tim Terry.
Here.
Daniel McDaniel.
Here.
Roger Rainwater.
Here.
Ron Powell.
Here.
That's the full form.
Thank you, ma'am. We have one item on the agenda this evening, excuse me, and that is a resolution to adopt 2023 city equipment budget. Ms. Marshall, of course, appears here to answer questions and will guide us through this. I'll turn over to you, Ms. Marshall.
Normally, we do a state or the city financial report. It's very long. It goes over what's behind all the numbers. It goes over fiscal health. It goes over everything regarding that budget and how that budget, our fund balances, all of that is in the budgets, in the statistical pages. But I did some more color, if you will. We decided that in the event of the going on right now with the freezing rain, and I just got a word that Portsmouth's having some issues right now, which is what I have to go back to, I'd like to do that before two hours from now. So, being technically that this budget has to be approved, I'd like to approve the budget tonight, but I will give you some color on it just to let you know what you've seen or except for you. Everybody has seen 90% to 100% of all the different departments that are in this budget. I will let you know that I did make the change from the admin of justice category for county sales tax, and I moved it to the sidewalk fund at its entire 1%. It will maintain the admin of justice even with the budgeted expense at a $71,000 limit, and it will put all $25,920 into the sidewalk fund for them to use. So, there won't be a mass in $93,000 there. Revenue streams are conservatively budgeted for this year considering the city sales and use tax might be facing some kind of a recession in the second half of the year. That's up for debate right now because I've been hearing where that the economists are predicting that we're going to be a little more recession group here and that that isn't going to be affecting us as much, nearly as much. And that's coming from some economic think tank people from the state of Arkansas. And they're also saying that it would be miles more than what was previously suggested. So, the quarterly reviews that we do, we may be looking at revising some of our tax structures as we get a better feel for what's happening with the economy. So, we're at 4.5 for the city sales and use tax. You'll notice we went from 16 to 12 to 9.7 to 4.5. I originally projected a 6% city sales and use tax in keeping with what I saw was happening. That was before we started hearing rumbles of the recession. We also budgeted lower for the county sales tax of 8.5%, down from the 14, and I think that's probably in the ballpark of where it might be. We do have January's numbers. January's numbers are rather good. Right now, the January's number is November's sales collections. So, November, December will be January and February, and we'll start seeing where it's going in the March collections that we received. Because that will be January's. Everything else budget-wise, the only thing I really want to point out to you is I think it's a strong budget. We're not weak in, right this year, or nothing's really alarming enough to where I would say we need to go back and revisit. But I will tell you, the yellow caution lights are flashing for a couple of departments. We're taking our fund balance down from our current $16 million down to 12, right under, right at 12 million. But we do that every year. We budget lower and then we end up higher. We budgeted about a $13 million fund balance this year. We ended at 16 million. And that's because of projects that were budgeted that weren't done and got pushed off to another year. And so, the fund balances remain in the accounts. The good news is that the interest rates that we're currently collecting on our large fund balance, large checking accounts, are real good. Right now, we're getting 3.28 or more percentage for right now, averaging somewhere between $11,000 and $12,000 a month in interest, when we were only getting annually probably somewhere between $2,000 and $4,000 annually. This is a monthly amount. It does sign my discussion about taking it and investing in T-bills. We're only going to do that because we're going to get more favorable interest rates. There's really no reason to do that as long as we're getting those favorable rates and we can have immediate access to those funds. So, we don't have to worry about putting it in and then bringing it back and paying a penalty and losing some interest opportunity. So, I'm going to keep it there and watch it and see how that goes as far as the interest is concerned. Our budget is, if somebody were to ask, is a 17.9, just slightly under $18 million budget. And that's including the carryovers that are going to be funded with the money, with the expense this year that we're not running through last year. That's a little over $2 million in carryovers. $252,000, I think it is, somewhere in that. $254,000. So, that's coming over. It's, we had a little over about a $15.5 million budget last year. It's 18 now. A lot of that has to do with inflation. A lot of it has to do with the gas prices. A lot of it has to do with the materials and supplies, with the supply chain issues. Dollar amounts are going up. We went from an $8 million to a $10 million operating expenses, from the operations. That's all the operating departments owe and owes. So, it normally was anywhere about 7.2 to 7.5 each year for 17, 18, and 19, or 18, 19, and 20. We were at 7.5 million. It went to 8.5 million and 21, 10 million and 22, and we're budgeting 10.4 in operating expense this year. And 23. So, those are some of the highlights. The fund balance is projected, it's actually projected in 12 million proposed projects, total funds. It's down 11.73%. The question is, that's credited on a $7 million capital expenditure budget. Our CapEx budget is $7.7 million. The budget we had last year was 6.8. Forty-three percent of it was actually spent, and so that's where most of the carryover comes from. So, budget within that $7.7 is a carryover of $2.32 in capital. The rest is non-capital carryover. And that tells you that we're putting $5,675,000 into new capital projects. So, we have a carryover from what wasn't done last year, and we're budgeting $5.5 million in new projects. I did a study starting two years ago, actually it was three, but two years ago, I started in earnest looking at how much of our capital was going to maintenance, maintaining capital items and assets that we currently have, including infrastructure that are currently in place, versus how much was new infrastructure and new growth spent. Two years ago, it was 85.15, 85 to maintenance, 15 to new growth. Last year was 820. This year, we're 50.50. So, we're shifting, appears, to be looking to lay down some new infrastructure in order to develop new growth. And that's what you do want to see. You want to see a balance between maintenance and growth. That's responsible growth. You don't want to throw away all the new growth because then you're ignoring it. So, we need a healthy balance there. We're starting to achieve that. We are spending all our money on just maintaining what we currently have and not doing new growth. You're not generating new income. So, that's something I wanted to point out. As far as our salaries are concerned, I made a comment about 45% is a municipality percentage for your actual salary expense to your operating revenues. So, in, I have a little graph that I was going to put up there. It's not in your packet there. We were in, from 18 through 22, we were at 38%, 38%, 37%, 37% last year. We were at 36%. And this year, we're budgeting 41%. But that's the budget. What I gave you previous was actual to actual. We don't have actual numbers for '23. That's what we're anticipating. But I really will tell you that I have to adjust that down because we don't actually achieve our budgeted payrolls. We come in slightly under $200,000 off favorably every year. So, we were right at 189, 225, 180. In 2021, we were right at 100,000 off, and we were $152,000 off last year. That was a 4.74% surplus percentage from what we budgeted. And the reason why our salaries, no matter what we budget, don't come in at what we say should is because we have open positions budgeted, and there are open positions are budgeted for the whole year because we don't know when they're going to fill it. Also, turnover affects that. So, our budget's at a worst-case scenario budget. So, what I do, and I do this every year, is I take that last year's percentage of 4.74, and I say, let's attribute that to the budget for this year and reduce the current budget by what I'm anticipating will be a shortfall. In other words, what we're not going to end up having to spend because we have still open positions. And that would equate that amount for our expense for payroll to 3.7 million instead of 3.9. And by doing that, that number recalculates from 41% to 39. So, right where we're at, 38, 37, 39, we're not experiencing a major growth. And I will tell you, as far as our budget is concerned, to our expense, not our revenue stream, but our expense, it's right at 38%, which is exactly where we were all the previous years, with the exception of last year. Last year, our payroll expense actual, to our actual operating expense was 32%, which means the payroll didn't keep up with our actual expenditures because of inflation, which was 38%. So, you'll see that's been corrected by the poll that you gave this year. So, as far as the payroll to expense percentage, we're right where we were in previous year.
We don't have anybody over their budget.
No. Everybody's maxed at the max.
Okay, good.
In fact, we did that. That's one thing I do want to point out in the discussion we had with the police department. What we did is we took his information for the merits and all those that hit cap, we reduced the merit down to the cap. There are five employees now in the police department. They will be getting a merit, but it will be much smaller. It's like a 2%. And it puts them right at the max. Nobody's over the max. So, we managed that. And I think that was your idea, you planned this to do that.
Well, some of them are getting a pretty good one.
Well, that's to get them up. Everybody, you talking about police?
Yeah.
Yeah. When we did the police budget, he adjusted the pay to a 40. He wanted the base salary to be 42,000.
No, I'm talking about in the little slide that you're talking about. You know, a couple of them got a 7% merit and an 8%.
Right.
8% merit.
But it's less than the 3,800. You notice the 3,800, I'm the only one that has it right now.
No, it's, you're saying less than the 3.
67, page 67. You're the only one, by the way, that has it on the paper. Well, as well as Rob.
Well, each shot has a paper copy in case.
I did a paper copy.
Somebody didn't want to use.
But you have it on your tablets. So, it's page 67 on the tablet. All right. And that gives, what he did is he wanted, what was it going to take to get the base salary up to 42,000?
Right.
So, that established it at 33.6866, and that is what he then pushed out all the way down the line. So, everybody got the merit increase up so that their distance changed as well. So, you wouldn't catch up starting a new patrolman and not make the same change to the sergeants or the forecalls and the dependents and everything else. What it did, though, is it pushed several of them, that number, by the way, is to get them to the max as long as the number was below 33. As you see, everybody got 33. They didn't because they were maxed out.
And, but yeah, so they got them up to the max, so I'm saying.
Correct.
Yeah, so they got, they got 33, 68, too.
Who did?
The two that, you know, got up to the max. Except their five were at the max.
They're bold, didn't they? Can you see? Bold, they're probably not.
It's hard to see bold ones.
Uh, reading about two-thirds of the way down, he said 53, 360, 63. He got the 26, 29. Nobody that's at max got the 36, uh, 33.68. He got 26. Then the one below got 1,050, 1,050 down at the bottom, the last two on that page, 1214 and 1335. So.
The two, like I said, we had the two.
What did I want his name?
And Gossip, you know, got the max, or well, got 33.68.
No, they didn't. The name's below. The name is below the line.
The name's below the line.
Right. So, Gossip, let's go.
Says Gossip's 33.
Ubit is the first one. Hubid is the second one. Stewart is the third. Hobbs and Wolford.
And I see that, yeah. Wait. Okay, I guess I'm, you're saying her name is underneath?
Yes.
So, I see that.
Gossip's at 55, 955. His max is 58, 267, and he gets the 33 because he's not at the max.
Oh, so that's what, okay, Dear and Gossip got that as well.
There, if you're not at the max, you're getting the 33. If you're at the max, you're getting less.
Well, I see.
Everybody gets 33 if you're not at the max.
Which is six people, right? One, two, three.
Five people.
Five.
It might be easier to see on tablet because it's got different colors and stuff.
So, you hit a button and you change the pages.
Yeah.
Trust me, everybody is appropriate on here based on the unit. Okay. And let's see. In order to balance the budget, in order to make it a balanced budget, we, in order to balance the budget, our revenues this year were budgeted at $13,408,000. Our expenses, yeah, this is what, this is what it takes to balance the budget. Your expenses are $17,944. So, that tells you right there, you're budgeting more expense than you have revenue. Normally, a balanced budget is you don't spend more than you take more. But the reason we can do that is because we have money sitting in our fund balances that are building up, that was designated or designed to be spent, such as our city sales and use taxes, which are restricted purpose, and now they're struggling to spend them. So, in order to balance the budget on the budgeted revenue to expenditure page, which is in the very beginning, it's page three on your budgets. We have to take out of our fund balance $4,535,000. The ones that are negative are contributing as a surplus to offset the ones that are not negative. The ones that are not negative are police that are battling every year, and water sewer and street department and parks department. And I can tell you, street, parks, and water sewer are heavy in capital. There's some major projects in the parks department that are going on, as you know, you've seen the budget. And water sewer, sewer mostly not necessarily as much water. Sewer has some major dollar amount projects that are budgeted for this year. The good news is, water sewer is a department that has the ability, very little unique. They have a permanent one set sales tax going to them, mostly for the capital structure. But they also have the unique ability to earn a profit and actually raise the rates. So, they are doing a rate study, and it does appear that four- to five-year period that the rates will cover, they will be at, the ability is for them to be able to resolve them. So, they're a unique animal. You kind of discount them a little bit. You just don't want them financing the future. And when we do a real state of the city, and I can put all the graphs and charts and things I want to put up there to show you where we are and where we're going, the biggest challenge is in the street department. I've mentioned they were lowfully underfunded. They still are. They have given me a budget for the next two years out. So, I can tell you, in 2024, you're going to be okay as far as their budget is concerned, even though they pushed out a couple million dollars worth of projects. But in 2025, that's where some of the problems are going to happen. So, we're going to have to start seeing, we're going to have to look at how to creatively do some of those projects. I have some solutions. I'll tell you that in the state of the city. And there's a game plan. We're formulating that right now. Because what I don't want to do is go into a situation where you have to finance our future. Because even though our debt structure right now is very good, very good, I don't want it to get where we're financing every little thing that comes along with that. And with that, I would just want to say, unless you have any questions specific to budget, you do have the ability at the reviews and set it, you can even set it at a council meeting. You can amend this budget if you go through and find that there's some things that you want to address or change. Right now, just to get through this meeting, this implement letter behind us, I would make the recommendation that you approve.
Just merit over your guys. Is it, is there none?
It's a.
I just want to talk, oh, where is the pool? I thought that's what we talked about.
Down on the gallon.
I just.
Downstairs, anyone?
It was, I think it's just in that one line.
I thought that's what we talked.
It's right down, it's halfway down the page, 27.50 yearly incentive. And then they have.
What page is that?
No, it's wages.
56.
Oh, 56.
56, this page.
56 is street. Yeah, you don't, you don't have anything in your merit. You have code. And that's it. Did you, did you want to, because this right here, this wage level would usually be dropping.
I'll never get a chance, I have to review, I have a chance to review our budget before he gets out.
We need some level 300 powder.
How did we do that last year as far as giving a lump sum for him to decide how he's going to do the merits? Do you know how much for him last year?
Uh. Can't do lump sums.
Well, we did away with lump sums a couple of years ago. I said, I don't, that was not a good idea.
Well, I mean, no, I mean, I love, he had a lump sum that he spread, that he did spread.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we played with. It's not.
It's not in there.
It's not in there.
It was the balance.
We'll do it next year. Do it next year.
I'd love to be able to get a chance to talk to review the 11th hour, this first information. Again, 11,000 what?
186.88.
186.88?
I'm going to, it'll show up on here. It's 11,187. Because we don't, I'm not going to be. That's, brings their.
And Tom, can you give, send me or email?
Can you email us all the copy once you make changes?
That change. Yeah, just sit it to me after this change. So, let me know.
Your, yeah, and your wage total will be 3848301 instead of 372. It wasn't 361. So, 3% change to the budget.
I'll make a motion. We adopt this resolution to the budget with the changes to merit for street as discussed.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution with the changes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Ricker?
Yes.
Mr. Stint here?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Roger Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dan's here.
Thank you. Thank you all, gentlemen. Thank you, Charlotte. Thank you for a quick meeting. Thank you, Tom. You don't, I don't have to tell you, but I'll tell you anyway. Tom pours his life into this thing daily. And he's always hard on it, too. I know it is a working, living document. So, thank you, Tom, for the hard work and dedication to this. On behalf of all of the employees, I want to thank you for putting in that column for sure and awarding those merits. I appreciate it. And you could tell the street department that I gave them that kid. That's, as Tom has said, this is strong and healthy with some caution, right, moving in, that we'll address as we get there, depending on how I think you're going. But I think it looks good. And again, appreciate you guys coming in. This, this year, as I've done in the past, I'm approaching it a little bit different this year of not only encouraging every department to be looking at grants and pursuing grants, but I'm insisting that they do that. I know some of them do that already. Parks is kind of a natural, and there's a lot of grants for parks. It doesn't make it any easier to get them, but there's a lot of them out there. Casey's already picked that up and gone with it. Chief does. Talked about one today, visiting with the lady that encouraged her to make sure she looked at the grant applications. Most say you can do that. Jeff, well, I don't. So, everybody, Tim, there are lots of grants and they're becoming more available. This is weird. We're in a weird time. It's like some economists say there's no money. They're thinking it's going downhill. Look at all the other stuff, and there's just a lot of money available. You know how to get it. So, I get to hear about that. And just believe in them. Those that went and heard about this a couple weeks ago, they're all coming down the pot. So, yes, sir.
The state of Arkansas put out what their percentage was of their collections from online sales the last three years. And it started at 7.25%, is what their destination was from three years ago. It went down to 6.5, 7.5 or 7.75. It went down to 6.5 or 6.25, somewhere in there, down to 5.5. So, it's dropped in the last three years. The first year was the COVID year when brick and mortar was shut, so everybody was buying online. Next year, brick and mortar started opening up. People started relaxing. They started going back out to the stores. So, the bricks and mortar were attracting people that buy now here. It's deep discount. We've been closed. Come on and shop. So, online sales took a little bit of a dip, and it took another dip this year. According to what we're reading from the Arkansas Department of Revenue, their, their. So online sales took a little bit of a dip, and it took another dip this year, according to what we're reading from the Arkansas Department of Revenue, their, their, their reason for that, they're saying, has a lot to do with the fact that inflation jumped so high, that people were pulling back. They're paying more for their goods, which kept it up, but they're being more cautious on the discretionary spending. That's why, that's why I just wanted to point that out. When you see the state of the city financial presentation, it's gonna open up your eyes to a lot of different things that are really parts for the city, and it might change some of your vision that you're looking at, where you should be looking. I will tell you, I'm gonna end this with a story, I want you to hear it tonight. It has to do with your mind. Your mind, except the mind's over there, you can hear it. This has to be, y'all need to hear this, it has to do with your mind. Your mind cannot process negative, it doesn't understand negative, it only understands positive. To point that out, I don't want you to think about an apple, don't think about an apple, whatever you do, don't. Most of you immediately pictured an apple in your head. And the reason is, because your mind says, I don't care, I don't, you don't tell me that, I'm gonna see what I wanna see. And you see the positive, you just completely reverse the negative. Now, to put that into perspective, why I did that, first, we're going down a ski slope, the beginners want to go down the slope by doing a slalom through trees, you know, they go around trees and they're going out there. And they go with the mindset, don't hit the tree, don't hit the tree, don't hit the tree, don't hit the tree, so what are they focusing on? They're focusing on the tree, they're not focusing on the path through the tree. They're focusing only on the tree so much that they see the obstacle rather than the path. So what do they end up doing? Getting your tires. How many times have you been doing like, don't cut my finger, don't cut my finger, don't cut? Cut my finger, because I was focusing on the obstacle. And we need to focus on the expert skiers, why they don't hit the tree, is because they go, stay on the path, stay on the path, stay on the path, stay on the path. So it's all in your perspective. To be successful, you focus on the path, not on the obstacles. So that's what we have to remember as we go through this year, stay on the path. And I'm gonna try to give you the financial path when I do the presentation next time.
Hey, Tom, on the salaries cap, the sewer director doesn't have one to know where it stood, the vision, it's like a, got a cell error in it, in case, just, just since we're honest.
Yeah, it's hot printout, I printed it today.
Making sure that you not know merit, if he was intended that it's supposed to happen here.
Not, he's kind, he knows it, um, there's a dollar over the cap, their grant company.
I guess, for sewer, is, is Dalton a sewer now, or?
Sewer, yes.
He's the way, so it, yeah.
He's sewer, yes, officially January.
Okay, so no merit for him.
He gets no, that salary was established January, so they didn't, they really did not put an end or a code.
And animal troubles, well?
Animal business.
Oh, salaries the next meeting.
Water, park, maker.
Your animal control.
Yeah. Don't give in her merit, because she just already got it.
I just wanted to make sure.
That she is getting out of trouble.
And, um.
We need to put on our agenda, if I can do this right here, a discussion about the matrix for water sewer and parks.
It, it is on merit for it being next meeting.
It's on the agenda.
To adopt the, the increase.
The whole matrix?
The federal, yes.
Well, there's a, there is a resolution, maybe an ordinance, on our books, that, you know, we changed the matrix for everyone except parks, water sewer. Because they were given the power by a commission to set their salaries and handles to people. So I noticed on the matrix, last year's matrix, I believe.
Please, let me scroll it up.
That water sewers, numbers changed, parks did not, if I'm remembering all that right.
The numbers in the matrix.
In the matrix.
Yeah, they all changed.
No, they're all, all, all the cities are there, all same conditions.
You're saying they changed last year on their own because of commissions?
No, last year, if you look at last year's matrix for parks compared to prior years, the salaries did not change. Water sewer did. Now, I don't know what coal about, I, I don't know if we care that those positions are on our matrix or not, but we've got an ordinance that says we're, that, that we've given that power to the commissions.
Oh, yes, they do deal with that.
See what I'm saying?
And that doesn't change just because we have a matrix, they stay within it.
The way, where, where did you see it?
The matrix is not, in my opinion, should not, nobody should have the ability.
There's no law.
No commission. Huh?
By the council.
I don't think any, any commission has the ability or should have the ability to change the matrix.
I think we gave it to them.
Well, that's.
I'm gonna, Tom, did I send you that?
I wouldn't wanna parse that out.
I mean, that would be like, hey, let's have five city halls.
For all the city, I mean, you have commissions that.
I understand they have.
I mean, I don't have to go dig all that up, because I'm obviously, I don't have one. We should put that on our agenda for a discussion, and I'll go dig all of what I'm talking about up.
Okay, the merit, the matrix is on the next meeting, because y'all need to authorize the federal increase, federal allowances, plus water waste, water hasn't approved some position admissions in there, y'all can see that on there too. But it would be so costly to keep track of it if y'all are just like the rest of us. Pull that out there, we need to all get, and they can do what they want, you know, but, I mean, they gotta stay within their matrix too.
They can do what they want within the matrix.
Right, right. If they want to change the matrix and do what you're talking about.
According to the ordinance.
Be in accordance with the ordinance.
They pay their.
But he's just saying the wording on ordinance is contradictory.
A little bit weird.
And that's, I understand what you're saying.
No, I, I, you got two, you got two things, which, I mean, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll shut up. You got two things, one, you got an ordinance that says, we are creating a water sewer commission and giving them full and complete control to operate this thing. You can't encumber the city, but you otherwise have full control to operate the thing. And then there was an ordinance, maybe a resolution that says, you know, salary matrix.
Resolution.
Would be with the exception of parks and water, because they have their own.
I don't think it's right, yeah.
It doesn't.
If it doesn't, you can put section in there, just make it clarify.
I think there's a clarification that needs to be done. I'll dig all of that up for the next meeting.
Reason it's a, not.
Yeah, yeah.
You, you understand on that page forty-eight, the reason that's divided in there?
Yeah.
Is because there's no dollar amount in there, it doesn't count it if it's zero, because zero over, it's, that's why it says it's sort of divided by whatever page. Had he gotten a merit and a, a dollar amount was put in there for the adjustment, it would come back to an actual number.
Well, all the others, zeros didn't have that, because that's zero percent.
Zero.
And I, I figured there was just a error in sales, because all the others said zero, there's all one.
Because I put the zero there.
It's a hard change.
That was a form.
Hard change, yeah, I know, I know that, that's horrible.
That's why, because it didn't get one.
Okay, one other thing, not only a gentleman on mission anyways, is an after spot, Chief that Bob Purvis brought in, uh, giving me my full blessing and good form, and see what he can find out about this, I think it's gonna be a great value to the city, and puts another burden on the streets. What does it, I think it's a great idea, so we'll, we'll be getting into that too. And I want to say again to the council, thank you on behalf of the, before dismissed, uh, to all employees, I want to say something tonight, I was gonna wait till next Monday night, but I'm gonna say it tonight, I may say it Monday night too. My intention as the mayor is to continue what I've been trying to do for the last eight and a half years, and it is to grow the city. And when I say grow the city, I mean, grow it and grow it responsibly. For anybody who doesn't realize still, that we don't have a plan, I beg you to come and talk to Tom or I, or anybody else in the city, or any of these departments. I don't, I know you all have jobs and you're, and all that, and I appreciate that, but instead of taking other people's word for it, I'm hearing comments like, you know, the mayor's in somebody's pocket over here, or, and that just makes me angry to no end, that. I don't care if Bill Smith from Tallahassee, wherever, walks in here tomorrow with a plan to develop a green in Arkansas, I'm gonna bend over backwards to help that person get that developed. If it's a, if it's a plausible, doable, makes sense, does not hurt the city, and makes sales tax ready for the city to dream, and I'm gonna work on it with Tom and anybody else. So, I just wanted to say that now, and I'll say it again next month probably, and I may say it ever, I don't know, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of talk out there about how we do things, or how I do things, and if you want, if you want to know, come and ask me. I mean, heaven forbid, I've had two councilmen, two councilmen in my tenure, eight and a half years, come to my office. In eight and a half years, and it wasn't about anything other than getting, making sure somebody got a raise, and that's all it was. No questions about, have we run anything, no question about what we're doing. If you want to know, come and ask me, please. My door's open, I am not here every single day, all day long, because I do a lot of stuff in Fort Smith, with the mayor's up there and those guys, because our water future, by the way, in case anybody doesn't know it, I think everybody does, and, uh, it's being broadcasted that we're in dire straits. Uh, we are in a situation where we need to get more water, and I'm supposed to be the first one to agree with that, and everybody else. I've talked to Fort Smith several occasions, I did with Mr. John Daly a couple of years ago, and some representatives then, I think Daniel Witt, somebody, I continue to talk to Fort Smith. I know we have James Fort, uh, in my opinion, we need Fort Smith and James Fort, and whoever else we can hook onto. Because I don't think it's, I don't think it is far-fetched that this community indeed could be twenty-five thousand people by twenty forty. I mean, I, you know, we talked about the one eight, at thirty-five, the one eighty-eight and all that stuff, and that, that's coming, that's a real deal, I don't care what anybody says, it's a real deal, they've wasted a lot of money, if that's not a real deal. So, we're gonna grow, and we're gonna grow responsibly, okay? If you want to know something, come and ask me, please, I would appreciate that.
I would.
Also, I just heard, I just wanted to get kudos, I heard that the police chief went to Memphis to help out in that situation.
Yes, he took two days off and did that on his own. And to step a rumor, the Tahoe is sitting in his driveway at his house, not in Memphis, Tennessee. Can't stand rumors like that. None of that does anything except to harm what we got going here. We've got a team, we're not gonna agree every day about everything, and I don't expect us to, we wouldn't get anything done if we did. But yes, that's, he, he's up there, and I think that's probably the company he's looking at to build work with once he retires. He called me, notified me last week, he didn't tell me where he's going, he said, I'd like to have a couple of days off if it's okay, and I said, it's absolutely fine, we got a conference, and he does.
Good house to handle that situation.
Yep, I wouldn't want to be there without somebody willing to do it.
We got, we got some other military guys up there too, some more military guys up there too.
Yep, yep.
Just want to mention that we're working on the dedicated trail system in the lake to Michael LeChambeau, I don't know if you guys have seen that or not, but we're trying to kind of crowd, crowd, fundraise the project cost for that, get everything taken care of on a fundraising basis, just so the city's not burdened with it, and also because it's a good way for his friends and family to give back.
That's awesome.
County set up that fund this bank for that. You can, put the money here, donate it here, but we will transfer the money over to the county that funds that.
Give a early grant, about fifty grand possibly? Yeah, it's possible, that's the goal.
Not close, are we?
We're not.
Not close. We've got ten dollars.
I have.
Ten dollars.
We got a guy from the recycling center that comes over two weeks and gives.
Every time he gets paid.
A little portion of his paycheck to the.
He works to work in the lake, but.
Yeah. So that's.
No, not that one.
Different one.
Different one, the other, so.
And I've had several calls, I, I actually had, I don't want to take too much more time, but an architect up in Fayetteville called me Friday, and Michael has started a leadership academy, they have a bunch of architects, and they pull their money together, and they'll be donating, um, a very decent sum.
If you haven't seen it, the sign is duplicate of what's out on the highway.
I did the sign, yeah.
Listen to it.
Yeah, it's awesome, I mean, obviously, he didn't design it for that. Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Take that, Mike.
Second, second, thank you, gentlemen.
My mom said it was snowing at her house, Washburn. My mother said it was Washburn.